Good evening. My name is Ms. McGonig and I would like to welcome you all to the second of three Laramie County School District Number One Board of Trustees Candidate Forums hosted by the Cheyenne Teachers Educational Association. A little bit about me, I have been a Spanish teacher in the district for eight years now, and I was elected to serve in the role of Member at Large on this DTVA Executive Board, and I volunteered to organize these candidate forums. If you don't know who we are, the Cheyenne Teachers Education Association is a professional organization that strives to improve public education in the lives of Laramie County School District students. Our members are teachers, counselors, librarians, social workers, coaches, nurses, and other certified staff. We are dedicated employees who work to deliver services to students throughout their school day and advocate for positive public education policies. We also try to bridge the gap between educators, policymakers, and the members of the community. And building that bridge is why we are here tonight. Now for some thank yous. First, I want to say thank you to the candidates for showing an interest in serving our community, for running for school board, and for being with us tonight. Next, I want to say thank you to the Wyoming Education Association, especially the WBA's Communications Director, Amanda Turner, for all of her hard work that she put into these candidate forums. I would also like to say thank you to LCSD One for their support of our association and for offering us the space to host these forums. This thank you is extended to Mr. Mirage and to the custodial staff who prepared the space for us tonight. A huge thank you to the student moderators who are choosing to put out their homework for another two hours to be here and run the show for us. And finally, to you, the members of the community who are showing up and being active participants in our community's success. Thank you all. Here's some general information about this year's election. For out of the seven seats of Laramie County School District Board for election this November, candidates have filed in different area races based on where they live, and residents of Laramie County will get to vote for one area of candidates where you reside and one at-large candidate that will represent all of the triads. The forum tonight hosts Area Two and At-Large Candidates. Last night, we hosted Area One's forum at South High School, and Area Three's forum will be tomorrow night at Central High School's auditorium again from 6:00 to 7:30. At-large Candidates will be present at all forums. So, let's talk about tonight's event. Like I said, tonight's event will be hosting Area Two and At-Large Candidates. We invited every candidate who filed for Area Two and At-Large Races. We asked the candidates to complete a written questionnaire for our candidate biography sheets, and you can access that by scanning the QR code that's up here, and there's some other QR codes throughout the auditorium. There are also paper copies that may have been handed out. We generated the questions for tonight's forum by sharing a survey with students, teachers, staff, and parents with instructions to try to spread it as far as we could. The survey was administered during the past few weeks, and it generated over eighty responses. We put these questions into unique clusters based on the triad from which they have originated from, and we attempted to address as many of the community's concerns as we could by refining those eighty questions into just a per-triad. Tonight, you'll be hearing the Area Two questions. We're asking that the audience hold a hall of applause until the end for the candidates. It is now my pleasure to introduce you to our moderators of this forum. Please give a round of applause for Cheyenne East High School Student Council and Speech and Debate Students. I'm going to step aside now and allow the students to take over. Moderators, please introduce yourselves, state the rules for this forum, and begin with the questions. Thank you, everybody.
Hi, everyone. My name is Camila Rivera, and I am a student here at East High School. I'm in 12th grade, and I participate in Speech and Debate, National Honor Society, and DECA.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cooper Taylor, and I'm a student here at East. I'm in 12th grade, and I'm this year's student body president for our Student Council Chapter, and I also participate in National Honor Society and Graduation Team.
Hello, my name is Dani Schultz. I'm a student at East High School. I'm in 12th grade, and I participate in National Honor Society, Speech and Debate, and Student Council.
Hi, my name is Oakley Simons, and I'm a student here at East High School. I'm an 11th grader, and I participate in Speech and Debate, Student Council, and Model UN.
Hi, y'all. My name is Patrick Coggan. I'm a student here at East High School as well, and I'm in the 12th grade. But I also participate in Speech and Debate, Model UN, National Honor Society, and Racks Club, and I'm this school's senior body president or senior vice president. Okay, so for this debate, we will have the following rules, procedures, and etiquette requirements.
Okay.
Candidates, we will begin with a 90-second introduction of why you are running for the school board. Candidates will have up to 90 seconds to answer each question. The time limit will be strictly adhered to. Moderator will call time at the end of the 90 seconds, and the candidates are asked to sign off their comments immediately.
If you find that you've run out of time or are cut off before you finish a point, jot it down, because the last question of the night will give you a final 60 seconds to give any last remarks or finish making a point from earlier in the forum.
Questions will be posed to all candidates, beginning with Area Two and then At-Large in alphabetical order, and will then rotate, so each candidate will respond first for different questions.
Since this forum, since this is a forum and not a debate, please avoid any personal attacks on the other candidates. Thank you.
All right. To begin with our first question, you'll have 90 seconds. Camila is going to give you a thumbs up and put her thumb down, and you'll hear the, or you'll just see the timer as it goes through the circle. So, the first question is, please introduce yourself and explain why you are running for the school board.
My name is Brooke Humphrey. I'm born and raised here in Cheyenne, Wyoming, graduated from Central in 2013, and now my husband and I run a local small business and have two boys, Silas and Banks. They're three-in-one, and they are my Y. I've always felt led to do my part in serving my community, and in this season, I believe that's being a part of our local school board. With having my young boys, there's, there's drive and there's motivation, and there's, there's a lot at stake, and so I'm very passionate about ensuring that the district is the best that it possibly can be for our students, our parents, and our teachers as well. Our teachers are the backbone of our district, and if they are not treated as so and appreciated in an appropriate way, we are not going to have the class teachers that we need for our students. And so ultimately, my Y is my boys, not just mine, but your kids as well, and to ensure that we have a district that teachers are proud to be a part of.
My mom is a retired elementary school librarian and eighth-grade history teacher. She actually liked teaching eighth graders. About eighteen years ago, a little later in her teaching career, we were hanging out on the couch watching Murder She Wrote, R.I.P. Angela Langsbury. I took her and asked, "Mom, how do you know you've been a successful teacher?" She didn't hesitate when she replied. She said, "Honey, if I change one student's life for the positive, if I've given them hope, confidence, and understanding, I've succeeded." I sat there for a moment, did some mental math, and I said, "Mom, you've taught about 2,000 students." She said, "Yes, I know." That conversation has stuck with me through the years, and I'm ready to share that same commitment. I'm committed to students. I'd like to implement a student advisory board to run alongside the school board on the right recommendations and weigh in on topics. I'm committed to writing policy to make sure every single student feels a sense of belonging and pride. I'm committed to parents' rights and the community, the town hall, our schools, your voice, where we educate and enable the community to understand policy so you can influence change. I'm committed to all LCSD One staff, making sure we get back into the top five highest paying states for teachers. And I'm committed to helping show well-rounded, valued, contributing members of society once students graduate by making sure the profile of a graduate works for all students, not just the ones going to college.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Cheyenne Teachers Education Association for hosting this event. It's great to be here. My name is Rich Weidersfond, and I'm running for reelection to the Board of Trustees. So, I come to this job with 30 years of experience in public school education. I've been a teacher, a principal, and a central office administrator. I really believe that my background and training has prepared me to be a good board member, and I think I have something to offer. I have some goals and objectives for the next four years. They really do center around the district's strategic plan. Specifically, student readiness, healthy environment, and community engagement are critical aspects of the plan. So, this plan was developed over a period of a couple of different years with the input from community stakeholders, teachers, parents, and other staff members within the school district and outside of it. So, I think the board in the next four years should be laser-focused on this plan, because I believe that it's directly related to positive student outcomes, specifically literacy for kindergarten through third grade, and I think the board needs to pay attention to it. It doesn't do any good if it sits on the shelf and nobody pays any attention to it. Thank you.
Sorry, you're gonna have to look slightly.
Good evening. My name is Hank Bailey. I'm running for the At-Large seat in County School District Number One. I do wish to thank the Cheyenne Teachers Education Association Policy and Exforms. I served previously on the Board of Trustees for 10 years. The last year, I was the chairman of the board, so I bring immediate experience in that sense to this, to this campaign. I am married to Sandy. She and I are both graduates of Cheyenne East High School. Although one of our children graduated from this high school, and 14 of our grandchildren are, either have been educated in this district or are currently being educated in this district. I coached youth sports in this community for nearly 25 years and have been involved in youth activities on many different levels throughout my life, including in my church. I'm running for four basic reasons. The first is to ensure that we have education and not indoctrination in the classroom, to ensure that the rights and the role of parents are respected, to ensure that resources get into the classroom where education takes place, and finally, to make sure we have a school environment in all of our schools, which will allow students to flourish so that they can build a foundation to achieve their dreams.
My name is Renee Hinkle, and I am running for the At-Large seat for Laramie County School Board. I'm an OB-GYN physician. I've served 11 years in the U.S. Navy. I've lived and worked in Cheyenne for 24 years and have delivered thousands of babies in this community. I raised two daughters who are educated in our school system in Cheyenne. I am passionate about high-quality public education. One of the main reasons that we moved here when I started having a family was because of the strong public schools in Cheyenne. I believe that without a high-quality public education, a community cannot thrive. I have served on many boards throughout Cheyenne and for the state in the past 24 years and bring experience of board governance into this position. I'm running for the school board because over the past two years, the focus of the board has been distracted by national political issues that do not contribute to the education of our students. I want to turn the focus of the board back to its main purpose, which is providing high-quality education to every student in this district to the best of its ability. I want to get politics out of the boardroom and out of the classroom. I believe all students deserve equal opportunity for higher education. They deserve to feel safe physically and emotionally, and I believe students should be treated with dignity and respect.
The first thing I'd like to say is thank you to everyone that's here tonight. Go Speech and Debateers. So, I'm super excited to be here with you all. My name is Jennifer Pasqua, and I'm running for the At-Large seat for LCSD Number One School Board. Obviously, that's why I'm here, right? So, the number-one reason I'm running is I have a passion for education. I am an educator. This is my 18th year as a teacher. I currently teach elementary students, K-6, special education students. Prior to that, I was employed in this district for many years, taught at all levels, kindergarten. I even taught 12th graders, who I'm sorry, but you kind of are like kindergarten sometimes. And I would just say that I have education in my family. My husband's also an educator, and my son attends East High School. He's a freshman here at East High School. My poor son has two parents that are educators, so he hears a lot about this. What motivated me to run the number-one reason is very similar to Dr. Hinkle. What she mentioned is I want to see our education system thrive, and I don't want to see national politics in our school board. I want to focus on local issues, local school board, local problems, so I don't want to be debating things that aren't happening in our school district.
Moving on to our second question. What do you believe is the most important issue concerning the East Triad? What will you do as a school board member to address it?
Thank you. That's a great question. I'm going to address this in two different ways. One, from the perspective of students, and then one from potentially their perspective from parents. I spent some time with Eastside folks and students this summer, just trying to get an understanding of what their education journey looks like. We talked about things around teachers not wanting to talk about controversial subjects. They want to celebrate diversity more. And when I asked them, "What interferes with your learning?", their answer is homophobic and racism. So, from the student's side, that's what I think the biggest issue is here at least. From the parent's side, in July and June and July of this year, I ran Facebook ads to a survey that asked what district you are in and what you think the biggest issue is in LCSD One. Now, not all of them may not have students. They may not have kids in the district, but they certainly share what their biggest issue they thought in LCSD One. And for East specifically, it's lack of equality across sports, academics, and other extracurricular activities. So, for number-one with the students, homophobic and racism has no place here. It has no place anywhere. I think we need to educate. We need to teach our students and our parents and our community about diversity and how that, we need to welcome them. I think with lack of equality across sports, academics, and other extracurricular activities, I want to make sure they're equally celebrated and...
How are we supposed to know who's next? I'm sorry. Am I just missing something or just going in here? Okay. Thank you. Well, you know, I guess I'm kind of taken aback by the question. I've never really thought about this. But I know one thing, you know, I went to East High School for a period of time until my parents moved across town. At that time, I transferred in the middle of my junior year to go to Central High School because they strictly enforced the boundaries at that time. You didn't have really any options. So, I know I have a lot of friends that teach at East High School, and I know some of their kids that go to school here. One of the biggest problems, and it's not really unique to the East Triad, it's really unique to the district as a whole, is discrimination exists in this community, and it exists in the East Triad. People need to understand that the east part of town is not exempt from discrimination. They think about discrimination. They think, "Well, that's a south-side problem." It's not just a south-side problem. So, it's something that we need to address, and I don't know how, I think it begins at home. And I know that one thing that we talk about as a board is we have to make sure that we have a no-tolerance policy toward discrimination. And we have a policy in place that says, "If you see something, say something." And you really, we have good policies in place, and if you don't know about the problem, you can't fix it. So, I think it's something we need to work really hard on.
Thank you. Well, on the last point, I'll just say I'm one of the few, I think, on this panel that has actually fought in the legal system against employers and others for discrimination, against employees for discrimination, pasting those kinds of things on. Very familiar with those issues from a legal perspective, and I don't think anybody on this panel would disagree with Rich for making sure that we take any, any issues of discrimination seriously. I too am a little maybe a little lost to answer this question specifically, but I will say this. I think the biggest issue facing the entire school district, including East High School, if I read the recent proficiency test outcomes correctly, is improving the education and the outcomes that they place as a result of what takes place in the classroom. Part of that's going to factor into a later question. I think, I think our teachers are so burdened with assessments, testing, all of those kinds of things that kind of take them off what they would like to do in the classroom, which is teach. I think you need two basic things to have successful education. You need a caring, capable teacher, and you need a willing student. And the rest of the stuff kind of becomes sloth, if, excuse that.
Okay, thank you. I agree. I think when we think from a board perspective, I think we think about district-wide, and each school has their own individual, each area has their own individual difficulties. But I have to agree, where Fort Marina and Rich said as well, that I think discrimination of all kinds in the district is very, very high on our minds as, as problems that we want to try and fix. I don't know that any of us have a specific idea on how to exactly fix that, other than that we need to make sure that everyone in the district understands that discrimination will not be tolerated, and it needs to come from the top down and the bottom up. And we need to make sure that everyone, from administrators down to students, teachers, all the staff that work in the buildings, know that discrimination will not be tolerated. We cannot continue to be embarrassed by having Air Force families request to leave the area because they're capable of being discriminated against. That's just intolerable. We also need to make sure that we do have adequate facilities, that the schools have adequate facilities, that the schools have adequate ideas, they have great teachers, and that we're not overcrowded. Those are some big issues that we'll be dealing with.
So, I would say, as someone who lives over here on the east side, one of the biggest concerns that I have is the growth, the growth of this side of town and what that does to students in the classroom, and very similar to what Dr. Hinkle mentioned, which was the overcrowding. So, you would have a school right down the street, this happened to me, someone used this as an example, it's my personal experience. You would have a new, brand-new elementary school right down the street from where you live, but your student couldn't go there. I know that's another issue as well, so I don't want to get into that, but I just wanted to specifically speak to that because it was overcrowded, right? He couldn't go into that specific grade because it was overcrowded. And we just continue to grow and grow and grow on this side of town, and what that's going to create for inequality to resources, buildings, students getting what they need, where are they going to go, where are we going to put them, and it's going to really burden the waiver system currently that we have as well. So, there's a whole host of issues that I think on this side of town that are very specific to the East Triad. The other thing that I would say that's not specific to the East Triad is the issue of inclusivity. And when you expand like we are on this side of town, there's a lot of issues with not being included and not feeling like you're part of the community. And I know I've spoken to a lot of students, and my old student at times doesn't feel like he's included, and that could be due to the constant rotation of moving from school or place.
I would have to agree with what everyone up here has said as far as discrimination is a huge issue district-wide. And our, as Rich mentioned, our school district currently has a no-tolerance policy. I believe that that needs to be enforced better. I'm not sure what is, what's going on in the walls as far as per school, but I've talked to a couple administrators and a couple teachers, and they just feel like their hands are tied. Like they go, "I see, is the principal getting a referral, and then what?" So, I think we need to have better implementation of our current policies. And if that's not working, let's look at our policy and see how we can better protect our kids, because first and foremost is our kids' safety. And if they're not feeling safe at school, they're not going to be able to focus and learn to the ability that they could if they feel safe. Now, second thing that I think is a huge issue Jennifer mentioned is the overcrowding, and it is imminent everywhere in this triad, especially as she mentioned, with how much the east is growing. Just the fact that her kid wasn't able to go to the school across the street, brand-new building, that just speaks to how the East Triad needs to step it up to make sure that we are not overcrowding our buildings and therefore overcrowding our teachers, and therefore it's having to compromise on our students' education because they're not getting the one-on-one ratio per se that they should be with their teacher.
Question three. What are some of the ideas you have to encourage parents to become partners with the school district to educate their children?
Thank you for that question. So, this is an age-old problem, and I think it's, when I was an elementary principal, one of the biggest issues that I had was to get reluctant parents to be involved in their child's education. Part of, part of what drives that whole situation is what kind of an experience did the parents have when they were in elementary school? There are a lot of parents out there that there's a bad taste in their mouth when it comes to school. They didn't do well in school, they don't like to go to school, and they really don't want to be involved. They love their children, and I think, given, if every, if all things are equal, I think they probably would be involved. Some parents have unique circumstances. I knew a mom who works two jobs. She's a single mom, and she does not have time to go to school and spend a lot of time at school, working with her child's teacher or volunteering, those kinds of things. She has plenty to do, and there just aren't enough hours in the day. I had a student when I was at principal at Gildine who's lived in their car. That's a tear-jerker all the time, second grade. Now, that, that mom loved her daughter and would really like to have been involved in her education, but couldn't do it. Well, I agree that it's vitally important for parents to be involved in the education of their children. I believe the most important education that takes place for each child is in the hall. It was that when I was on the board the last time, I would often say that the district got too much blame when things didn't go right with the students, and sometimes we got too much credit when it did go right, because a lot of what takes place takes place in the hall, and the students like you who are motivated and want to work and want to achieve. But one of the things we can do to encourage parent participation is to listen to them when they do step forward and have things to say. When I was on the board before, parents knew they could call me at any time, and we sometimes had smaller meetings or different group meetings that covered different topics like school security. I can remember having meetings about bullying when I was on the board the last time. And that's an issue that's never going to go away, unfortunately. We have to try, but it's never going to go away from. And I would just say, it's, it's, it's tough. I had an experience when I was on the board where parents wanted to talk to me about a problem that was existing with their child in the school, and when I met with them, I discovered that he worked all night long, she worked all day long, and they seldom had time together with, as a family, and that's just a tough challenge.
Thank you. I agree with everything that's been said so far, and we deal with it in every, in every place, the hospitals, with Hotwood, trying to get doctors involved in leadership and things like that. So, in every place you go, you're going to find, trying to decrease apathy is a difficult thing. What we found when I was in position leadership was that... What we found, when I was in position leadership, was that communication is the key. Communicate, communicate, over-communicate. Let everybody know what's going on. Try and educate as much as you can on why the importance of these things. When you're talking to elementary school families, when you're talking to pre-kindergarten families, that just educate, educate, educate on why home involvement is so important in long-term success of their students. I also agree with smaller areas. When we talk about trying to get parents involved and trying to listen to them, I also agree that that's going to be one way to help keep them involved. And at regular board meetings is not a great place because there's not a way for, there's not a two-way communication, it's a one-way. So trying to do smaller groups where there can be two-way communication, like town halls in, in each of the districts or something like that, where smaller groups can get together and actually have a dialogue with parents and do, and to be available as a board member to discuss parent, parent issues.
So I would say that this is already happening. We really have good teachers that work with parents for the betterment of their students. And I know in my experience, that's the only thing I can speak to, as a teacher, I always invite parents in, and I know many educators in the school system do that. And I think something that's really been a negative thing that's happened in these last couple of years specifically, the national spotlight coming into the school board has really put the pressure on people to feel like they have to come and complain about something that isn't happening. And those comments are detrimental to the success of the school system. So teachers are building these relationships with parents. This is happening in our school. Positive relationships are happening. But I think because we've started focusing on these national issues, what's happened is that communication between parents and teachers and administrators at schools has really sort of been negative. And I think that's why I mentioned earlier, getting rid of the national politics in the local school board. The other thing I would say is, you know, I'm, I'm really proud that the district has refined, as much as it annoys me. I feel like it is a good communication tool, but something that we could do is maybe communicate other things than just like once, you know, one event, one big event that's happening every so often, or grades, or grades or do this, or report crush. Maybe focus on more community events, more community-type activities, and also we can have students involved in the process. I want to keep going.
What first came to mind with this question was communication and transparency. And it is extremely important that, like Rich said, we communicate, we communicate again, we over-communicate to cover basis, whether that's informing the public, hey, school board meetings are open to the public, please come and learn about what's going on in your district. I know for me, I had no clue you were even allowed in them. I didn't even know they were a thing until the last couple of years. And so just informing parents of what their involvement can look like, and encouraging involvement with their students. And helping foster relationship between student and parent, and making sure that that is safe at home as well. And so huge, I mean, the only idea I would, I would have would be communication, whether it's sending flyers home with students about a community event, like Jennifer mentioned, or a, a meeting coming up sooner, hey, we're looking at this policy change, here's where you can make comments via that. I think just making what's going on with this report more accessible. And yes, there's a bunch of information on the website, but let's make that more public so that the public, students, parents, teachers can get more involved with what's going on.
I'm just going to read the question again. Last night I, I lost some of the questions and all of, all of the people. What are some ideas you have to encourage parents to be partners with school district to educate their, their children? The first thing that comes to mind is why aren't they? Why aren't they partnering? And really asking and trying to figure out what are the main reasons? Some could be is that they don't have time, they don't know their rights, they don't care. And I think taking those and addressing them each, each differently. And then I think ultimately it is educating them, and the parents, on the process, on the policy, empowering them to understand how these things work. Because I think the more educated they are, they can come with better ideas or facilitate better conversations and partnership with the school district employees. So I think it's, it's, it's really the why. And I think there are great partners and partnerships between students and parents. And there are some really, really bad ones. And we need to focus on that and figure out how we can, how we can address them in, in groups. And communication. I'm a marketer at heart. I think that the school district could do a better job of marketing a lot of their policies and a lot of things that are going on, so people can, can participate and hear about those things.
Thank you. So question four. Many of our buildings struggle with poor HVAC machinery. What will you do to make sure that our facilities are comfortable for our students and staff?
Well, it's a great question, and it's one that we don't have a lot of control over. This relates to funding for our schools. I had a granddaughter a couple of years ago who was sitting in class, in elementary class, with a mask on, and it was very hot, it was late August, and she actually passed out around two o'clock in the afternoon, fell out of her seat to her head, and ended up in the emergency room. Because it was very hot in the classroom. So I would love to see all of our buildings have air conditioning, but as I say, that's, that's something we don't have complete control over. If we did, I think everybody would agree we'd have, we'd wave that magic wand and it would be here. I will just add this, and maybe I shouldn't, but I'm going to. As I say, I, I intend the school in this district, grade school, junior high, high school, all my children went to school here, my grandchildren going, going to school here. So it would be really nice to have this, but it's not the top priority for me. I survived it, my, my children survived it, and I think we can all survive it until we get enough money from the legislature to do something about it.
Thank you. I agree. Unfortunately, the district itself does not have the capability to create enough money to fix all the buildings. Otherwise, we would have not all of the oldest buildings in the state on the list to be fixed. We do have some of the oldest buildings in the state as some of our schools, and that is, and that is an issue. That is an issue with trying to make priority, high, high-quality education equal for all students, and we do need to work on it. But that is a legislative issue. The facilities budget that we get comes straight from the district, and we don't necessarily always get to make those decisions. Any decisions that can be made on the district level obviously would be made for that to be a priority, but we don't always have that. And we can work on things such as trying to make sure there are plenty of fans and that, you know, that it's as comfortable as it can possibly be, but we're not going to fix that overnight, unfortunately. We can help to encourage legislators to try to fund those facility funds appropriately, and lobby with them, and work with other community members as well to try and.
Dr. Hinkle, always spilling my finger.
We need to change the order.
I would just, just add on to what Dr. Hinkle just said is lobby the legislature. That's what I can do as a school board member and become really, really annoying. I would say that this can also be the time, the, the term power to the people really does matter. Because we can put things on social media about the classroom. We can show them what it's like to be teaching in a building when it's 85, 90 degrees in August and September. We can invite them to come sit in the classroom when students are taking YATAP and the temperature is 90 degrees in the classroom. Okay? We can do those things. So I just feel like to say that we can't do anything, we are school board members, and we can't change how we get funding, but we certainly can do things to contact the legislature to try to get the funding model changed. Is that going to be easy? No way. But should we give up and not try? No.
I, this, this goes back to our students being first. And in the same sense of if they don't feel safe in the building, if they don't feel comfortable in the building, I know, I'm sweating my butt off, trying to learn Spanish or whatever it may be, it can be extremely distracting. And so I would, this, like I can't say it's maybe not like top, top priority, but it's definitely a priority that our students are comfortable in, in a, in a space where they don't have to worry about, oh, am I drinking enough water? We can forget how much I'm sweating. So I would agree with Jennifer that we can lobby for this, and we can also look at, look at how our funds are being distributed right now. Is there a way that, that we can kind of move things around and delegate differently so that we are paying attention to, okay, it's going to cost this much to fix this building's AC, let's make sure we can get that done? Another, another thing. I know I need to start writing something. I have time to get that one short. This is what happens when you have kids. Am I right? I, it's. Oh, if I, you know what, if I think about it, I'll say it up here.
How many people have kids that have gone to Bags or Dilldine or Anderson in the last five years? Or currently? Or have any of you gone to Dilldine or Bags or anybody? Yeah? Would you send your kids to Bain or Cole if we could ship them there, bus them there? I pose that question to a lot of moms who have, who have students in those, in those buildings, and I ask them, why don't we do a student swap? Why don't we do a kid swap? And the looks on their faces is, is the answer to the question.
So this is really an interesting question. One thing that really hasn't been mentioned is our weather is changing. You know, years ago, I remember when I was in elementary school, we used to say that we had two seasons in Cheyenne, winter and August. And I don't ever remember being too hot or uncomfortable at school while school was in session. So I think part of the, part of what we're dealing with is a change in weather patterns, but we don't have any control over that. We do have control over funding for schools, and that really is one of the reasons why our school district has joined with the Wyoming Education Association in Wausau, the state, to fund schools appropriately. And part of that deals with facility. One of the things that we could encourage the legislature to do is, okay, if you're not going to give us a new building, at least give us some money so we can retrofit this building so that we can have air conditioning in the building, and we can make sure that our students are comfortable. Because years ago, we never used to have summer school either, and now we have summer school. I mean, that's just an invitation to disaster when you, when you're in school during the hottest months of the year, and it seems to be getting hotter all the time. So those are issues that we can lobby our legislators with so that we can maybe get some of these buildings retro.
All right. Our fifth question is, families are requesting to be transferred from Warren Air Force Base because of racism towards students. What should be done to stop this offensive behavior? Please explain what role the school board plays in creating a welcoming and inclusive school environment for all students.
Thank you. I think we addressed some of this earlier when we talked about the specific east triad problems as well. But obviously discrimination is an issue that has been much more, well, not, is much more, maybe more aware, more people are aware that we have that. And I think that's one of the things we need to continue, is to just make sure that we are talking about it, to make sure that the entire district is aware that we're looking at it, that we're talking about it, that we are trying to decrease that behavior within our district. Because again, it is embarrassing as a, as a district, as a city, as a state, to have known that we have a discrimination problem in our schools. I will say that Mr. Reader Fan talked about the fact that there is a strategic plan in place, and part of that plan is to deal with discrimination, is to try and make the community safer emotionally and physically for all students. And I think we need to follow that plan. I think we need to hold the superintendent accountable to that plan, as well as all of the other administration, all the way down through the schools.
I would, I would say that we need to acknowledge that it's happening. That's first step number one, and not shy away from the idea that it did happen and it is continuing to happen. The response should be immediate. It shouldn't take a long period of time to even acknowledge it. The next thing I would say is policies are great, but are you practicing the policy? Are you modeling the policy? We can put anything on paper, but is it being demonstrated on a daily basis? I pose that question because I would say it's not. I would say I don't feel like teachers and administrators feel empowered to do anything about this problem. I feel like it's easier to just pretend like we've done something, and say we've done something, and then we, we move on. So the, the easiest way is to empower everyone involved in the building to feel like they can make a difference and do something about it, including the students, not just the adults.
So this question in particular is, is heart-wrenching because we have military families that are sacrificing their lives for our country, coming and not feeling welcomed into our community. So it's honestly really embarrassing, and it should, it just should not be a thing. Cheyenne should be welcoming as a whole. I understand that there is an organization called Purple Stars or something that helps partner the school with the new military members that are coming in, and helps walk those students into the transition of a new school. These kids are typically moving every couple of years, and addressing that, recognizing that, and making this a comfortable environment. We also need to be in the know that our students who, where Cheyenne is home, they need to be aware of the sacrifice that they are making, and we need to respect that and honor that with our students, and, and on all levels, not just color of their skin. And so Jennifer touched on all that I wanted to say. I, I agree with you completely. I think, yes, there's policies, but we're not enforcing our policies from a teacher, administration level. There's no point in those policies. So if we need to hold, we need to, like you said, empower our teachers to know when appropriate, which is all the time, like Rich said, there's a see anything, do so, I'm sorry, I'm butchering the policy, but we, we need to empower and encourage our teachers to speak up and to follow through with the policies that are currently in place.
You know, even the phrase hate speech is heartbreaking. Why can't we have more kind speech, or love speech, or joy speech? I digress. We can write policy and a discipline matrix that protects the students' First Amendment rights and prevents harassment. Yes, the First Amendment right, come to surprise, actually has no general exception for offensive or hateful expression. So under the First Amendment, yes, you can be hateful, you can have hate speech. However, there's a nuance when it comes to schools. The United States Constitution imposes an obligation on schools to treat students equally, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. And federal courts have ruled that schools can be legally liable when they fail to protect lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender students from harassment. I can give you the source of that information if you would like it. My name is Marina, and my pronouns are she and her.
So we've talked a little bit about this, and Dr. Hinkle mentioned the component under the strategic plan, specifically its healthy environment. And it really guarantees students' physical and emotional safety. So discrimination is something that, we have excellent policies to deal with discrimination and harassment, prohibiting those behaviors. It's not the policies that are the problem. Many times, you have to be aware that discrimination or the harassment occurred. Many victims of discrimination and harassment. Many victims of discrimination and harassment do not say anything about it. So if you see something, you need to say something. We keep repeating this mantra over and over again, but a lot of young people would just as soon ignore it and hope it goes away, and not have to deal with the drug. But I'm a firm believer that if you violate a rule or procedure, there need to be consequences for that. If there are no consequences for discrimination, harassment, bullying, that behavior is not going to change. I put a lot of the responsibility on the building administrator to create the kind of culture that needs to be prevalent in their building, so that the students and the parents knows what he or she administrator expects of them in his or her building, because that means a lot. The culture of the building is important.
So this is, this is, uh, plank number four on my platform, uh, ensuring the school environment for all students is clear. Um, again, I, I spent forty-four years of my life fighting battles with people, uh, including people who've been discriminated against, mistreated. I've tried cases in federal and state courts on the subject. Uh, no student, uh, should be bullied, harassed, uh, or mistreated because of the color of their skin, gender, or any, anything else. Uh, but I, but I want to say this. My observations of the students in this district, and I've, I've had children working at every high school in this district, and I've had, I've had children or grandchildren almost at every, every, uh, secondary, uh, a junior high and high school. What I see among the students in this district, I, I think we have some of the best students, uh, around. Uh, we, we have five of them over here. Uh, so, what I think exists is there are, there are those few that, um, cause these problems. And racism has always existed. It will never go away, unfortunately. It's a human condition. Uh, does that mean we give up and go try to do things to, to help people? No.
All right, moving on to our sixth question. What is your position on the current parent opt-out policy for library books? What is your opinion on limiting all students' access to books in school libraries with an opt-in policy?
I just had to... Um, so specifically, I'll just answer both questions really quick, because this is an easy thing for me to answer. I currently support the parent opt-out policy. I do not support an opt-in policy. Um, I would say I'm going to take a, a phrase and kind of make it my own, because I truly believe that books are mirrors, they're also doors, and they're also windows. And the easiest way for a young student, and a student in high school who maybe doesn't like to read, but discovers the one book that they can make a connection with, I do not want to take away that opportunity for any student. And, you know, um, some of, I, I wasn't a very good student, I guess, when I was in elementary school. I didn't really like to read until I was much older. And it was only through that, that I learned about a lot of places that I hope to someday go. Um, and I, I just don't think you, you have the right, or I have the right, to tell anybody else what they can read. Um, I want to clarify that in, in the national political world, and what's kind of creeped into the school board, is about certain books, and they're not available in elementary schools, and they're not necessarily available in junior highs. And some of the books they're talking about are taking components of, and just taking little snippets of. Well, we all know that that's not how you read a book, so I just want to say that real quick. As a teacher, you don't just paraphrase certain phrases and focus on one thing. Um, so to answer that question, again, I support the current policy, and I'm not promoting any books.
All right, so this is, this is an issue that I, that I became aware of, um, after I decided to run. So when I decided to run the school, I was not in the know of the, the whole location. People were asking, what do you, what do you think about books? What books are we talking about? So I've, I've taken time, and I've met with parents who are for opted, and I've met with parents who are for opt-out. And what I'm picking up is there's just a huge miscommunication on what books are what and what books are being talked about. So, um, again, this is something that I, I can't say that I, I haven't personally seen the books that are being talked about, I haven't read what's being talked about, but from what I have heard, um, based upon the material and the graphics, um, I believe that there, there's certain sexually rated explicit materials, um, whether or not they're in our libraries, I haven't gone and seen, so I'm just, this is from what I've heard. I believe that we need to protect our students, first and foremost, student safety. And so my question is, is if there is a sexually graphic book, as in pictures, on the library shelves, my question would be, why? Why is that there, and what is educating our kids? And, and so my answer to this is, our current opt-out policy does a great job with protecting the rights of our parents, with having the option to decide what their kids read. Um, I would be in favor for an opt-in policy, with the understanding that it is those sexually explicit books.
First of all, I want to discuss the sexually explicit and pornography. Um, pornography is presented in a way to incite arousal. Uh, I don't think anybody, young adult author, is writing books to get kids aroused. Sexually explicit is a subjective term, and I don't think anybody has the right to tell me, and, uh, what's sexually explicit to my child, there's a better. Second, this I literally just wrote down, I want to change it to just the book policy. And then third, parents have all the rights. I've learned so much about this in, in the last couple of weeks. They have the opt-in right, they have the opt-out right, they have, uh, they can curate their lists, they can work with their librarians to, hey, here are my values, what books do you think my kids should read? And hey, and the librarian, I mean, they are well-educated, well-versed, this is their profession, this is what they do every day. And quite honestly, we need to respect the heck out of them a little bit more.
Thank you. So when the board first started talking about this issue, we had a lot of acrimony going on in our board meetings. I received tons of emails saying, you know, your current policy's not working, you need an opt-in policy, and I must have received hundreds of emails. So the school district and the district librarian is currently use what's called the Destiny Program. And let me just give a shout out to our school librarians, they're outstanding professionals, and they can help any parent that wants to come in, that has concerns about what books that their child is giving, eh, that they're able to read or getting a hold of. And one of the things that they can do is, they can really manage the list. The, the parent can go in and talk to the librarian and say, this is the list, this, these are the only books I want my child to be able to check out, to the exclusion of all others. So you got a forty-title list, and Jimmy can only check books out from this list. So that's, to me, is an opt-in policy. So I think any, anything that, that parents want to be able to control, they're able to control. The issue for me is who is the decision-maker in this process? The decision-maker is not me, it really is the parent. And you talk, you go in and talk to any of our school librarians, they'll help you curate a list for your child's specific...
I'm an opt-in policy guy, uh, for a number of reasons. I, I think that, uh, it's, it's difficult, with all the parents have to be aware of, and doing raising for children, to be aware of everything that's in a library. Uh, I'm personally familiar with some, some of the materials that, uh, were proposed for classrooms in the district, and books in the library, um, with, uh, what I consider to be, uh, sexually explicit materials that had no place, uh, in, in, in a school library. I can't envision how it did anything to help proficiency in the language arts, science, or math, and I can't envision why taxpayer dollars would go to that. I agree that parents ought to be, uh, sort of the ultimate decider of this. I heard the term book banning. Uh, I'm not in favor of book banning at all. I'm in favor of appropriate, age-appropriate books in, in the school system. But these books, if parents want the children to have these books, whatever they might be, on whatever topic, they're available in the public library, and they're available online. Uh, and I don't think some of them need to be in our school libraries. I have spent the last eighteen years counseling with people who have severe porn, pornography addictions, it's a devastating addiction. And anything that promotes that or encourages this, it's a devastating early age risk problem.
Thank you. Uh, we do not have porn pornography in our schools. We have, we may have materials that some people don't approve of, um, but that doesn't mean everyone doesn't approve of them. And so everyone should have the ability, uh, to, uh, have those books available. Having, uh, people who are in the fringe part of, of society, whether they're LGBTQ or, or other reasons, being able to see themselves in these books is super important. Um, it helps them feel better about themselves, it, it keeps them emotionally safe, um, and it, it, uh, is part of their, uh, their growth. I don't believe in banning books. I think if you're talking about taking books out of the library and not allowing students to see those, that is banning books. Um, and not everybody has access to a public library, they can't get there, um, or they're not allowed to. Um, so, um, we have fabulous teachers, and we have fabulous librarians, and they are the experts in this, and they have cultivated a great list of books that, um, uh, students appreciate, that they, um, written in ways that are geared towards them, and they should be able to use those. Um, we need to, uh, count on the experts, we need to, uh, respect them and, um, and the way that they are cultivating these books.
So, question seven. The amount of work on teachers' plates is constantly piling up, and this is affecting teachers' retention. How would you advocate to keep teachers' workload's banned at school? What should the school district do to recruit and retain all staff members?
So I think that it is important that we are not overworking our teachers, and part of that is the overcrowding of schools, ensuring that they don't have an obscene amount of students to themselves to be educating and taken care of. So I think looking at how to address the overcrowding issue. Uh, another way that we need, that I plan to allocate for our teachers is to ensure that they are compensated for the work that they do. Um, I don't know currently what our, um, what the market rate is locally for our teacher salaries, but ensuring that they are being compensated in a, in a way that is, um, aggressive and, um, this word keeps letting me out, competitive with our, the states around us, ensuring that they are being taken care of financially for the work that they do, because we all know that the teachers aren't just working in the classrooms, they are working all summer to prepare for their students, they are working throughout the year in different weekend events and different evenings that they are pouring into their classroom and their students. So ensuring that, um, as a district, we're not putting more on their plate. So for example, if a certain school tests, um, above proficient, ensuring that they're not having to go through the documentation and the data that other schools who maybe didn't pass proficient, um, proficiently have to do as well. So ma- just ensuring that our teachers are, that their first and foremost job is to educate our kids, and it's critical.
So I work in, in private industry, and, and some of the things we do really well that I think can help, uh, in the education system and, and public education is, we do a really good job at, uh, making sure people feel valued, and I think it's different for everybody. While I appreciate videos and, and National Teachers Month, thank you, or National Principals Month, um, I think we really need, need to listen, uh, and understand how they feel valued. One way is obviously pay. I think the other thing we do really good in private industry is, we understand burnout, and we pay really close attention to burnout. And so we focus, we focus on communication and communicating three things that you need to know for the next two weeks, and that's it. It's being very focused, um, cutting out a lot of the noise, and making sure those three things for the next two weeks are communicated often and in different ways.
Thank you. So this, this is a, a problem that we deal with on a daily basis, how to recruit and retain teachers. I think there are a number of variables that really impact the whole issue, not the least of which is salaries. Teachers are underpaid. Our teachers in Wyoming used to be, or in Cheyenne specifically, used to be at the top of the market. That's no longer the case. They currently are about in the middle of the market, and that's a problem, because we're losing teachers to call random. There's another issue, and that is respect and value. Teachers want to be respected and valued for the work that they do. Many of them are, but if you talk to some, some of them are not. Class size is an issue. In my view, you know, being, working in an elementary school for a number of years, kindergarten through third grade, I've always believed that you shouldn't have any more than sixteen students in a primary classroom. And if you talk to a teacher and ask them if class size matters, I can pretty much guarantee what they're going to say. We have overcrowding in our buildings, and we've got an issue now that deals with funding. And if we keep build, if we keep bringing people into the community and not building schools, class size is going to get even worse.
The name Don Chainer probably will not mean, uh, much to anybody in here, maybe some. He was my father-in-law, he passed away in nineteen eighty-five in Cheyenne, Florida. But for many years, he was the head of the Wyoming Education Association. It was through his efforts, largely tireless efforts, that teacher pay and benefit went from wherever it wasn't at the time before he started to being second in the nation. Um, and I'm very proud of my father-in-law for his efforts to do that. As I said before, I have, I have three children who are educators, and I have a granddaughter who's an educator. And I think as a profession, uh, they are underpaid for all they do. I know how hard they work, I've seen it. I've seen my son work the grade, uh, English papers, uh, at the end of the semester. I've seen my daughter, uh, in, in elementary school, how much time and effort she put in, how much she cared for her children, bringing her classroom to our house at Christmas time, so they could see Christmas decorations, because she was teaching a, a group of kids that were sort of underprivileged. Uh, so I love teachers, I think as a profession, they're underpaid. I'm disappointed that the situation is what it is now. When I left the board in two thousand fourteen, it wasn't that way. We, we did not have any difficulty attracting teachers and retaining them. We, we would have hundreds of applicants for positions. And so, I think my time's up.
I have to agree with just about everything that's been said, um, so far, and I do think teacher pay is, um, a, a very important part of this, but it is not the only important part. We're trying to get our, um, uh, teacher salaries back up. You know, across the country, I think teachers are underpaid for everything that they do. They do, um, spend a lot of their own money, um, to help in classrooms. I think they spend a lot of their own personal time, uh, to, uh, do things outside of just the classroom, so it's not just during the school, uh, school hours that they're working. We need to make sure that, um, the, the board respects that and values that, we need to make sure that the school administration respects that and values that, we need to make sure that the community respects that and values that. You know, we hear stories all the time about teachers getting beat up now by parents for different national political issue ideas, and so we need to make sure that national politics stays out of the classroom as well. So paying teachers well is super important, but respecting them and valuing them is almost as important in retaining, uh, teachers... as important in retaining teachers in classrooms. And we need to work on that as well. Again, top, bottom, bottom up, everyone needs to be aware that teachers are one of our best assets and we can't afford to lose them. They are the experts. They're trained. They know how to take care of our students.
So, I agree again with what's been said and I would also agree that pay is certainly, I would like to be paid more. Who would ever say they wouldn't want to be paid more, right? But something, there's, there's whole parts to this question that are very specific to me and workload manageable. Has it ever been manageable with the expectation of what we put on teachers? I don't think so. I certainly haven't felt like it's ever been manageable. But what I would say that we could do, the first thing is we had to stop micromanaging our profession. I mean, every little thing we do as teachers is micromanaged, whether that's through paperwork, whether that's through walkthroughs, whatever it might be, but the level of micromanagement, I, let's be done. Assessment? What are we assessing and why are we assessing it? I don't know that I could tell you the answer to some of that and that's sad. That's really, really sad. Just a quick note on the assessment, I just got my son's YTOE scores from eighth grade. He's now in ninth grade, about to finish his first quarter of school. What does that tell me? The last thing that I would say is can we please stop with all the new initiatives? Every couple of years, we start with some new initiative. We don't train teachers. We don't give us time to learn anything about the program, about whatever we're doing, and then we move on to something new. And if you, you asked this question and you got an answer from a teacher, so.
So, due to time constraints, we're going to be skipping question eight and we'll be moving on to question nine. So, how will you allocate funding to sustain extracurricular activities in our schools?
That's a great question and I know there's a lot of talk and it's a polarizing subject here with the district not funding sports. As a high school athlete myself, all through grade school and all through junior high, publicly funded, it was an amazing outlet and it, you know, helped socialize, helped me socialize, find my tribe and that sort of thing. So, I'm a huge proponent of sports in general. I don't know enough about why the district didn't, or actually cut the funding for the sports. I don't know, you know, I don't know the nuances of why they did and I want to assume they did it for a very good reason. And if, if we get to discuss this again and bring it back, I will certainly take it into consideration and have an opinion there. I do want to say that the community in general does a great job of providing sports outside of school and I was able to attend the junior T-Bird football game, volleyball games at Cary. So, I think in general, the community is picking up that tab, so to speak, in a really great way. So, it's not that we're without and I think if the community can partner with the district and provide some things that maybe we can, you know, use funding for other important things, I'm up for it. So, I don't know enough about why they did that.
So, I, I'm a proponent of extracurricular activities. When I was a student, I participated in extracurricular activities. I think they're really important, but we have a finite amount of money. And so, it all, it all comes down to funding. We have a three hundred-plus million dollar budget. Eighty percent plus of that budget goes towards salary and benefits. So, it really comes down to this issue that's addressed in question number eight that we skipped over that maybe I'll talk about at the end of the forum. But it's all a question about allocating dollars. If you rob Peter to pay Paul, somebody's going to have to suffer. And so, it's, it really comes down to doing an analysis of, first of all, determining what extracurricular activities we're going to fund and how we're going to fund them. So, if we can identify, and I'm thinking that we can't fund all extracurricular activities, but I, but I agree with my colleague to the right that really indicated that the community does a great job of providing opportunities for our students to participate in a variety of different sports. Now, we have women's wrestling that's coming up. So, women's wrestling, and I think it's wonderful, but we're going to have to fund that as well. So, we're going to have fine dollars to do that. I think it's great that young women are going to be able to wrestle.
Well, let's not forget band, speech, debate, theater, all of those extracurricular activities are so important. Father of seven sons and one daughter, a lot of emphasis on athletics, but my wife would not permit them to avoid piano lessons and music lessons. And so, I am a firm believer in extracurricular activities. I think they teach so many things that we don't get in the classroom. Teamwork, sacrifice, hard work, commitment to a goal. I just, I'm a firm believer in that. I participated in athletics. I wasn't talented enough to play an instrument in the band or do what you guys do. But athletics was it for me. My children all participated in athletics and some of them in band and in the choir at East High School, the East High Singers. So, I just, I believe it's so important. And I don't know why we cut, we cut those things when administrative salaries go up, the size of central administration mushrooms, but we don't have enough money for some of these other things. That's a curious thing to me. And when I get on the board, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, I will take a very close look at that.
I have to agree. Extracurricular activities are a very high priority to me in public education. Both of my children did both sports and orchestra and band and choir and DECA and all the different things that were available. So, I think it's super important. I was in band, straight A and A band geek, that was me. And so, I do feel super important. We have not really cut any extracurricular activities for junior high, high school. They just cut the ones in elementary school. And again, it was a funding issue. Will those come back? I mean, hopefully someday if we can get all the funding that we need to get from the legislature, we hopefully will all be able to get those back in. I have to agree with Mr. Bailey in saying that we have to look at administration. Are we, are we top-heavy in administration because those are the highest salaries in the district? And so, we need to look at that and make sure that money is going to our students as much as possible, to our teachers, to the people who help create education. We as a board have to make every decision we do be about what is best for the students, what is best for our employees, what is best for our teachers. And so, I think once we as a board get cohesive that way and we can make every decision based on that, we will hopefully be able to continue to support extracurricular activities.
So, I too was taken aback by the idea not to fund elementary sports. My son tried track one year and that did not go well, but he got to discover that he didn't like it and a lot of kids don't have that opportunity unless they're in school. I can tell you, as you already know, and I don't want to be like silly and say this, but childhood obesity is an issue and if this is the only activity that students are getting and we just took it away from them, like what? Like the one thing that could get them out besides PE and we just cut the funding? I can tell you what it looked like on the outside because we did increase salaries and we did create new positions up at central administration at the same time, right after we did that. So, as somebody not an employee or not a teacher, just somebody on the outside looking in, that's sort of the picture I saw. The other thing that I would say is we often talk about we can't find the money or where do we find the money? We place importance on things that need to help you and if we don't value certain things, we don't fund them. I find that theater, of course, is important to me and speech and debate as well, but those often aren't highlighted. We tend to focus on sports. So, I would sure like to see a not necessarily funding issue, but maybe a community engagement issue of letting people know there are things outside of sports.
So, I believe in encouraging the development of the whole child and this encompasses the physical, intellectual, emotional and mental development of our students and a lot of that is fostered in extracurricular activities. So, as far as funding, I agree with Hank and the others that have mentioned that there may be a little more in central administration, but I also believe firmly in keeping our funding closest to the students and that's in our classrooms and that's in extracurricular activities. So, ensuring that our students have that option. And another thing I was going to touch on is community. Our community is great with offering a whole bunch of stuff. A lot of our students might not have the funds or the transportation to get to those things outside of school. So, for our schools to offer extracurricular activities where there's a bus ride after practice is huge for our community. And like Hank said, there's so much that can be taught on, with working with the team, whether it's speech and debate, whether you're on band, in band or on any kind of sports team, you learn so much about being a good human through those things that I will not take away from our kids. And I learned so much about who I was through extracurricular activities, but I, that is a top priority for me on the board is to ensure that. And maybe it comes down to those groups having to fundraise more. I know their community is so for extracurricular activities and they'll be more than willing to support in that way as well.
All right, on to our final question. You only have sixty seconds, sixty seconds to respond to this. What final thoughts or information would you like to share with voters?
You've got to pay more attention. Next time, I'll pay more attention. Okay, thank you. So, first of all, let me just say that it's a privilege to sit on the board of trustee for Leimy County School District Number One. I mean that sincerely. We don't all agree. In fact, we, there are some issues that we vehemently disagree on, but we all respect each other and I think that's all part of the deal. So, having said that, I hope that you'll give me an opportunity to serve for another four years on the board. It's been a privilege for me. And let me just say a couple of things about this lawsuit and the funding issue for education in the state of Wyoming. So, I was one of the trustees that voted to join with the Wyoming Education Association in suing the state because they have not fully funded education and they've done, in my view, have totally aggravated their responsibility to fund education in Wyoming at the level where it is necessary and our kids are suffering because of it. I'm going to close my poem. In May, when sea winds pierced our solitudes, I found the fresh redwood in the woods spreading asleep those blooms of damp milk, that pleased the desert in its sluggish grove. The purple petals falling in the pool made the dark water with her beauty gay. Here might the red bird come as plumes to cool and court the flower of achievements his array. Rodora, if the sages ask thee why this charm is wasted on earth and sky, tell them there the device we picked for sale, and beauty is its own excuse for thee. Why thou art there, oh rival of the rose, I never thought to ask, I never knew. But in my simile, the suppose, the self-same power that brought me there, brought you. We're all here because we love young people. We have different ideas about how to serve their interests, but every teacher in this district and everyone on this panel and you all deserve the very best we have.
I have to agree that we all do have our students in mind and their education in mind and that's why we're running for this position. I agree with the district joining the lawsuit. I think that's very important. It's happened several times in the last, over history and each time that it has happened, the school district does benefit by getting some increase in funding and so I think it's important. I think we need to encourage all people in the community to vote, to vote for education advocates at all levels, whether that's the school district, whether that's state legislation, whether that's the national parties as well. So, we need to make sure we're getting education advocates into those positions and that's one thing that everyone in this community can do.
Thank you. To go back to, I made myself a note so I can remember to go back to it like you told me to, so I follow through. Something I didn't mention on the opt-out policy that I wanted to bring up is I think there's been a lot of focus on that specific policy and something that we don't often think about that we should is there's a relationship between teacher and student and parent and we need to encourage that relationship and a lot of these issues can be resolved at the lowest level between parent, teacher and student versus going in and being angry about it at school board. The next thing I would say is I don't feel like students are involved enough in the communication process and I, as a board member, would really like to figure out ways to do that and I've got some ideas about how to do that and I would certainly like to see if I'm elected. If I'm not, I'd still like to encourage more student involvement in the process of school board. And the last thing I would say is there was, part of the question was about retaining teachers and I want to mention that I am not for limiting or getting rid of certain credentials for teachers, lowering the standards for teachers. So, that's been brought up and I'm not okay with that.
If anything, I'd like, that makes more work for them, Jennifer, because then they're having to, the teachers are qualified and they're doing the work of those that aren't. So, on question four with the whole AC, the thought that slipped my mind that I want to touch on is I know that there's a process to vet for new buildings in our state and the fact that if something gets fixed on a building, it puts them lower on the list, that needs to be relooked at. So, that's certainly that I would want to do if elected. And with the books, I, again, I haven't taken the, I haven't really focused on taking the time to look at what these books are. If there are books that are sexually graphic, not just explicit but graphic, those are the books that I am saying that I would be in the opt-out for just to protect the kids who may not know what that book is. Not an overall, general sexually explicit opt-in, but just those specific books people are showing is picture graphic. And then, I just.
That day on the couch, my mother went on to say, "It's emotionally, physically and mentally hard. Trying to engage each student every day is hard. Dealing with parents who make your knee is hard. Yet every day, when I turn off my classroom lights, I walk away knowing I tried to get every student my all." I share that story of commitment, care, focus, because they are my core. And for those of you who may think it's fluff, I'll share some of the knowledge I will bring to the board. I've experienced driving revenue for private industries, managing millions of dollars of budget and finding ways to work within those budgets. I bring fifteen years of business experience. I've led teams of twenty-seven or more from across the world. Having an open mind is important. I've learned to have an open mind through leadership. Hearing everybody, regardless of how they feel or their differences, is incredibly important when trying to influence change. Personally, I grew up with a single parent, a small town in southwest Montana. We were poor. I want students to see that they can be successful even through trauma.
Hello, everybody again. Please join me in giving a round of applause for our student moderators. And now, will you please join me in thanking and applauding the candidates for the, uh, thank you again, everyone, for joining us tonight and for the loads of people who helped put this forum on together and not just this wonderful, wonderful, we're sitting tomorrow night and it's a joy to have us here. be posting tomorrow night and some more for the last night itself. We'll be posting links to these recordings on our Cheyenne Teachers Education Association YouTube channel. We'll hopefully get those uploaded later this week. If you can check them out, please copy the links, show them out with the other voters in the community. Just remember that every Laramie County registered voter will be voting for two seats this year. You'll be voting for your area candidate and for your at-large candidate. We thank you and applaud you for showing up tonight, watching and for being informed, voters. Have a wonderful night.